I have a motion not to go into executive session. No, I think procedurally what we do is we're in recess until six o'clock.
Until six.
Because there's nothing can be done, we can't even go into executive session, we can't go into open session until six o'clock.
We can just do a recess till six?
We do, yeah, just announce it, Michael, the commissioner will go in recess.
The mayor and the city commissioners will now be in recess until 6:00 PM when the regular meeting will begin. Good evening, we will now resume the regular meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its strength, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your terms, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state of God, one nation, one God, one individual.
Tonight doing the prayer is Pastor Moises Molina from Jericho Church on Central Avenue.
Pastor Moises.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful opportunity to be here to conduct the regular business already established, and we pray that you can always be with us, give us your wisdom, that our city may always fear you and always be obedient to your word and also to your commandments. We pray that the wisdom that you have imparted, each one of us, and the intelligence may be always used properly, and we put in your hands this meeting and every business here conducted, that it may be blessed by you, and that everything may be in accordance to the law, and also to each one of the ordinances that having already been approved and pre-established. Please bless each person participating, their families, and always bless our city. We thank you for everything you do, and we thank you for your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
The next item on the agenda was action on executive session A, but we will not have that item since it was removed tonight, so we will continue with the mayor's activity update.
Just beginning of the school year, I wanted to congratulate the ISD on their report that they got on their school district, and I want to wish everybody a wonderful school year. And I know that right now it seems like there's going to be no rain in sight, and the heat is pretty amazing, but most of you who are from down here know that we don't know when a hurricane may or may not hit, and I think that your emergency preparedness group is doing a fantastic job in getting to be proactive. So they are handing out sandbags, there are notices that on Fridays and Saturdays this August 24th from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturdays on August 25th from 10:00 to 3:00 at the GBIK Circle at Industrial Park. There is a limit to how many you can take, but I would suggest strongly that, you know, even if we don't have a hurricane, you'll have them for next year. But to be proactive and get ready so that you don't have to go through something that is really, for some of us who have been residents down here for our whole life, I've been through a few of these things, and it's, we can weather them, and we can survive them, but the more prepared you are, the easier it gets to be. So those are my admonitions for the new school year, and that's it.
Next, we have the commissioner's activity update.
Hi, I just want to announce that next Wednesday, the 29th, that we'll be having a celebration for the opening of the substation down here at Market Square, and we want to invite everybody to come take part in that.
Anyone else?
I just have a quick update, I just wanted to remind the public that we are in the middle of hurricane season, and to remind everybody that when you put your brush out, make sure that it's on your property and not in the drainage ditch. I have been out touring District 2 with Public Works, looking at a lot of ways to improve the infrastructure. As many of you know that we have acquired loop farms recently for the dirt that would be moved to our landfill to help with the landfill topping, and a lot of things that we're looking at is possibly eventually, once all of the dirt is out of that and it's a hollowed area, perhaps making a detention pond where a lot of the drainage from our site from Southmost and District 2 would be able to flow more freely and into the river a lot faster. So I look forward to working with the commission to continue improving our drainage efforts, but in the meantime, we ask that you just be very vigilant and not allow anything at all in our drainage path. Thank you.
Mayor, and I wanted to thank Santana Torres, Martino Trevino, and everybody at Public Works Santiago, everybody for the refurbishing and the reinstallation of pump number three at the Impala pumps. When we get rain, when we get heavy rain and the waters are coming up, Impala pumps are quarter part or maybe close to half the part of the crucial getting waterways to be able to get rid of our water. So with pump number three being reinstalled, we're able to get, is it 120,000 gallons per minute that we're able to get out approximately? So with four pumps going, that's what we're getting out to the Rio Grande. So thank you, gentlemen, for all your work and all your effort, and please pass those sentiments on to the employees at Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Okay, Michael.
Next, we have the city manager's update.
Mayor and commissioners, just want to update you on some of the, since the last meeting. I have met with the GBIK Executive Director to see how we can collaborate on workforce and with the city. We are working on the bylaws and the service agreement as directed for that GBIK, and then I am meeting with the zoo regarding some of their finances, some of their needs, and the whole type of occupancy tax due diligence study continues. And as you mentioned, Mayor and commissioners, is that storm drainage seems to be a constant conversation. So we are reaching out, myself is reaching out to PUB, to Cameron County Irrigation District, to all our partners, because there's many partners that make this system work. So I am consistently looking at, hopefully there is no hurricane, but we are managing to say there's a conversation. So that's what I find myself, and the last thing is we did upgrade our 546 help. It's, we encourage everybody to use it because we track it. If somebody calls in, it gets to me if they don't answer. So continue 546 help, and we have a better tracking for it with statistics, data-driven.
Thank you, Michael.
Next on the agenda is a proclamation for Ms. Lucy Lopez, Ms. Teen H2O USA 2018. If you would please come up. Okay, we will go on to the presentations for the employee of the month. Mr. Fernando Ramirez, Public Works Supervisor, would you please come up? Please silence your phones.
Thank you. Good evening. On our mayor, city commissioners, I'd like to present the employee of the month of October, Mr. Fernando Ramirez, from the Public Works Department. When Mr. Ramirez was hired in 2012 as an Equipment Operator 3, he embraced the role and responsibilities for keeping the street maintenance program operations running. In 2016, he was promoted to Construction Supervisor, and during his tenure with the City of Brownsville Public Works Department, he constantly demonstrated good work ethics, job knowledge, to ensure the street maintenance program continued operating at its highest level. The Public Works Department is very fortunate and grateful to have an employee like Fernando Ramirez as in our staff roster. Mr. Ramirez, as the employee of the month, you receive a wristwatch, a gray plaque, and a belt pin, and also he gets one day paid off of his choice, and will also be featured on our Brownsville TV and our city website. He also becomes eligible to be selected as the employee of the year at our annual employee banquet in December of 2018.
Thank you, Santana.
Kind of nervous here.
I know, it's okay. You do great, you do great.
First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners, for your recognition, and I also want to thank the Public Works Department for helping me out grow professionally in this field of road construction. And I look forward every day coming to work, knowing that I can make a positive change for our community, using my experience to improve the city of Brownsville and provide great customer service for our citizens.
Well, we, on behalf of the whole commission and myself, we thank you and Santana and the whole department, thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Valley Initiative for the Development and Advancement, VIDA, please come up.
Your cell phone. Can we do the proclamation?
We can do it, we can change it, hold on. Go ahead. We're going to do the proclamation.
We're going to go back to proclamations. Ms. Lucy Lopez, Ms. Teen H2O USA 2018, if you would please come up.
I think your dad's got the camera going already. He had his phone going, right there.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring Ms. Teen H2O USA 2018 Lucy Lopez. Whereas Lucinda Lucy Marie Cornejo Lopez is a daughter of Honorable Judge Elia Cornejo Lopez and Dr. Leonel Lopez, and was raised in Brownsville, Texas. Whereas Lucy Lopez is a top-ranking student in the top 1% of her class, ranked at fourth out of 782 students in her class at Homer Hanna Early College High School. Lucy has served many leadership positions, including varsity cheer captain, National Honor Society Officer, first president of the Junior Catholic Daughters of America Court 1988, and scout mayor during the City of Brownsville Scout Government Day in 2018. Whereas in addition to her academic success, Lucy Lopez's talent for debate was most recently recognized by the National Hispanic Institute at the Great Debate and in Celebration 2018. Lucy is a Girl Scout Gold Award recipient and an altar server and lector at Holy Family Church. Whereas through the launching of the Adopt a Resaca Program, Lucy Lopez has enlisted the help of the community to preserve local waterways and eliminate trash and debris from local resacas for the enjoyment of residents and wildlife. And whereas thanks in part to her dedication to conserve and improve water, Lucy Lopez has been selected to represent the United States of America at the Miss Teen International H2O Ambassador 2018 Competition on November 10, 2018, in Curacado, Netherlands and Tilles. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of Said City, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Ms. Teen H2O USA 2018 Lucy Lopez, and further call upon the citizens of Brownsville to congratulate Lucy Lopez on her accomplishments as she represents the United States at the Miss Teen International H2O Ambassador 2018 Competition, done on this, the 21st day of August 2018. Congratulations.
Next, we will go to presentations for VIDA, Valley Initiative for Development and Advancement.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Priscilla Alvarez, I'm the Executive Director at VIDA. Our mission continues to work hard to address the many barriers that our participants face, in particular here in Brownsville, Brownsville residents. We're able to help them achieve success in their programs by helping them with financial assistance, supportive services, and most especially our intensive case management model. I wanted to share the results of a couple of studies that we had been in for quite some time, several years. The results were just released early this year. We have scientific evidence that is supported by the PACE evaluation that we participated in, and what it showed is that our program is an effective program that promotes self-sufficiency and reduces welfare utilization. In other words, VIDA's working. The study shows that over a 24-month follow-up period, VIDA students are earning more college credits, they're enrolling in college at a greater rate, and they're earning more college credentials than those in a randomly assigned control group that did not receive VIDA services. VIDA participants' receipt of college credentials was eight percentage points higher than the control group over the 24-month period, which is a pretty large effect. Additionally, we already have preliminary and strong evidence that these effects are growing over time. For a large portion of the sample, over three-quarters of the sample that we currently have, and we have 36 months of follow-up data on those individuals, VIDA has increased receipt of college credentials by 16 percentage points. So what we're seeing is that over time, that percentage is increasing. An effect of this size represents the second-largest effect on college credentials observed in similar rigorous studies among low-income individuals. The Office of Planning, Research, and Evaluation stated about VIDA, and I quote, "The effects are among the largest observed in rigorous studies of programs intended to increase low-income students' enrollment and completion of post-secondary education." The only one that beat us by just a few points was the City University of New York's ASAP Program. They have demonstrated slightly larger impacts on credits and credentials. This is something our region is really proud of. In addition, we also have research that supports, that supportive services like ours, the case management, the financial assistance, the childcare assistance. The reports are now showing that those are critical to increasing participants' chances of completing training, and our policymakers and community leaders are also recognizing this. I included links and information on both studies in your packets that each of you have. It is our hope that the City of Brownsville will continue to partner with us and with our organization as we strive to move Brownsville residents into the middle class. Included in your packet is a progress report as of May 18, 2018, showing, we're taking low-income individuals who are on food stamps, TANF, or living below federal poverty levels, and we're moving them into good-paying jobs that offer a family-sustaining wage and benefits. As of May, the average salary for our graduates, for Brownsville graduates, is $32,198.40. We expect that to increase by several more percentage points because we had a whole crop of LVNs and sonography technicians and ADNs that just graduated and will be into the workforce. So by the end of the year, I expect that to grow. And to demonstrate that a little bit, I included the fiscal year 1718 end-of-the-year report that showed an average wage of $44,000 for the students that we're helping from Brownsville. So I just wanted to let you know that we expect that $32,000 to grow some more. Also, on the summary report, so far this year, we have 22 graduates, we still have 58 active students, and the benchmark for the investment that the city gives VIDA is to serve 55 students. We were able to surpass that and served 85 students because we received another Texas Veterans Grant and the ACE Grant that Valley Interfaith helped us secure from the state, which is a matching grant. So we're able to serve more students from your city without asking for more money. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have a quick question. I am a very firm supporter of VIDA, as you know. I have friends that have gone through your program and wound up with master's degrees, and they make a ton of money. Let's say that I am somebody at home right now watching, and I really want to go to school, but I'm having problems putting the money together. How would somebody contact you or be able to enroll in the VIDA program?
Thank you, that's a good question. They can go to our website at www.vida careers.org, or they can call our office at 956-903-1900 extension five, and we'll help them register for an orientation. We do have orientations and placement sessions at TSC in their Student Services area, and we're starting to do some orientations at our churches here in Brownsville to make it easier for individuals living in the neighborhoods.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Next, we have Consent Agenda Items A through P.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to move the table item D of the consent item agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Would you approve the rest of the consent agenda items?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven.
Next, we have the public hearings, public hearing number seven, public hearing in action on first reading ordinance number 235-2018-Roe35-CO to rezon from general retail X to medium commercial X for a 4.28 acre tract of land, more or less, out of lots 15 and 16, block 308, El Jardín Re subdivision, shares 23, 25, 29, 30, and 31 of the Espíritu Santo grant located at 443 South Indiana Avenue.
Good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. This first case is 4.28 acres, it's fronting Indiana Avenue, it's currently zoned general retail X, which is 4C X, and they're asking for it to be rezoned to medium commercial X, which is 6C X. The purpose is for a freight terminal. To the north, south, and to the west, there's undeveloped land and single dwellings. To the south, there's commercial businesses, and to the east, there's single-family dwellings. Here's the zoning map. The purple is going to be fourth, commercial, 4C. To the north, there is a specific use in place for a warehouse, and abutting the property kind of to the south, that is zone medium commercial 6C, which is what they're asking for tonight. This property also received a specific use permit in the past for a freight terminal. They're asking to get it rezoned instead of having that specific use. Here's the 200-foot mailout radius. There are 25 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from general retail X, 4C X, to medium commercial X, 6C X-CO, with a conditional overlay to require a minimum of six-feet privacy fence along the front property line, and to require a minimum of a 10-foot vegetation buffer along residential areas. And this is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Plan.
And the applicant's replying with the requirements of the overlay?
Yes.
Motion to close public hearing?
Wait a minute, let me see if there's anyone here, I'm sorry. Is there anyone here on this issue? Okay, entertain that motion.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number eight, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe36 to rezon from medium retail A to general retail A for lot 38, block 1, Silver Oak subdivision, located at 995 West Ruben Torres Boulevard.
This property is 0.5845 of an acre, it's at the intersection of FM 802 and Laredo Road. It's currently zoned medium retail A, 3CA, and they're asking for general retail A, 4CA. The proposed use is a business plaza. So to the north of the property, there are single-family dwellings and civic institutions. To the west, there's undeveloped land and single-family dwellings. To the south, there's undeveloped land, single-family dwellings, and an electric station. To the east, there are single-family dwellings and commercial businesses. Here is the aerial map. Across 802 from this property, it is zoned fourth commercial. Across Laredo, it is zoned third commercial, as well as adjacent to the property to the Here's the 200-foot radius map, there are 27 mailouts and zero written opposition in this case. This request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Future Land Use Plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission supports this rezoning from medium retail A, 3CA, to general retail A, 4CA.
Anyone here on this issue?
To close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
To approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Next, we have public hearing number nine, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2018-Roe38 to rezon from dwelling A, apartment H to dwelling G for lot number 1, block 142-A, Stillman Extension located at 701 West St. Charles Street.
This property is 0.1377 of an acre. It's fronting St. Charles on the intersection with West 7th. It's currently zoned dwelling A and apartment H, and they're asking for dwelling G. The proposed use is a duplex. So to the north of the property, there are single-family dwellings and apartments; to the west, single-family dwellings and a civic institution; to the south, single-family dwelling and civic institution; and to the east, single-family dwelling and some commercial businesses. So here is the zoning map, where you can see that a portion of this property is currently zoned apartment H, the remainder is dwelling A. It was zoned apartment H back in 1968. The applicant applied for apartment H and was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission in July. They have come back and reapplied for dwelling G instead. The difference is before they could put, with apartment H, they could have a triplex, they could have three units. However, with dwelling G, the most units they could have is a duplex.
Is anyone here on this issue? Okay, you've got some folks right there.
Would you please come forward?
So it would not need the supermajority, right?
No. They did not appeal the previous decision, they reapplied.
Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Larry Holman.
Hi, Larry.
I live in West Brownsville, I live in the original townsite of West Brownsville. My house is on the edge of the original townsite of West Brownsville. I didn't know this, but two years ago, I did some research on my house, and my house was part of a pair of houses that were built for the daughters of the Rab family. Remember the Rab plantation out on Southmost Road? I didn't know that until about two years ago. Tomorrow, for lunch, I'm going to go eat in the house where Kris Kristofferson grew up. I didn't know that either until about two years ago. West Brownsville's very special. We've got the Belden Trail, we're trying to work on the West Rail Trail. I'm sure a group of you are familiar with that. We're in a historic overlay district for a reason, because, you know, my house was probably built before 1928, because the lady who lived in the house next door, which is no longer in existence, it burned down years ago, told me that she watched Skinner Elementary being built in 1928. It was a cow pasture across the street. We've got a bunch of treasures in West Brownsville. My wife, right now, is helping the community garden, which I think some of you guys were instrumental in helping to establish. She's in charge of the community garden. I know that you all are working on the Kris Kristofferson, I guess, project next to the old bridge, and so there are a lot of things that are happening. One of the things that we're deeply concerned about is allowing variances and convert houses to rental houses. The house next door to us, and part of the reason that it burned down- The house next door to us, and part of the reason that it burned down was because it wasn't taken care of, and that's normally the situation with some of the houses, especially less expensive houses in West Brownsville. We want to have the West Rail Trail go through. We want to have places where people want to live, bring their kids, and walk to schools, walk to the university, ride their bicycles to the university. Older folks, maybe, can walk to a restaurant and get a little exercise, call it exercise, you know, when you go get your morning coffee. We'd love that. So anyhow, we do not really want to start granting variances, if at all possible. The more important part is that I don't think this has gone before the historical committee, the, what are, what do they call, the...
Heritage, I think.
Yeah, the Heritage Group, yeah.
Historic Preservation Design Review Board.
Did it go before them?
What goes before them?
Sure.
It's after the zoning is approved, then they would submit the plans to the Building Division. Once those plans are near finished, then it would get submitted to the HPD RV.
Are there plans here, or is it just gonna be converted to a rent house?
There have been no plans submitted.
Yeah, that's what we're afraid of. We think that all that's gonna happen is they want an extra meter so that they can convert it to a duplex. So that's our fear. We really don't want to see the start of allowing variances in our area. We would rather have the city work with the historical group and find out, like I did two years ago, that our house is, you know, has historical significance. I'm gonna go eat in Chris Christopherson's house that he grew up in, I didn't know that. There are other things in our neighborhood just the same that I don't know. So, think about it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you Larry, appreciate it.
Good afternoon, I'm Bill Berg, I live on West St. Charles Street on the next, the next block from, from the house in question. My first comment, which I think may drive everything, is not mentioned in the staff description of this situation and why they think it should be approved, is that they don't mention that this is a historic overlay district. They do say the Planning and Zoning Development Department's plans for this area include duplexes, triplexes, row houses, apartments, but they don't mention that this is a historic overlay district with historic houses. My house was built in 1928, and it was, the architects went on to be well-known architects who designed churches throughout Texas. We are in the process of applying for a plaque. There are other plaques in the neighborhood. We would like those houses that are historic to have plaques, and those that are just wonderful old houses to be restored to their comfort, niceness, befitting a tree-lined extension to the original city plans. That would be wonderful. One of the things that does exist in the area is, and not mentioned, is that there are many, many church parking lots and church spaces that are owned in addition to churches. If you noticed on the, on one of the maps that was on the screen, the, there's a big green rectangle, that's a retail zone. In that retail zone, there are, this, this, this zone over here, it's not green, it's a big purple area. In that purple rectangle, on Levy Street, the next street up, there is the Assembly that's the, no, Temple Emmanuel Church is on the corner, next to it is the Rectory on Levy Street, and behind it, there are three properties. Two are owned by churches, and the one in the middle is a residence. Even though it's zoned retail, there's no, nothing retail going on there, I don't know why that designation is there. The green, part of the green area on this same map is, is Casa Alta, historic, historic building all by itself. The, the last, the last property over came up a few, maybe a month or two ago, with an application for a, to make an apartment with a triplex, which would have made the entire front of the property if that become a parking lot in order to accommodate the new parking lot rules. As a duplex, it's about an 1,800, if that, maybe smaller, square-foot, single-floor house. Dividing it into, would make it into two 900-foot units. In addition, there is a garage in the back, which may or may not be currently a residence. If it is currently a residence, it will be, it's illegal now, but it will be even more illegal when it's, when it's a duplex. A duplex in dwelling A requires a 75-foot front. A duplex in dwelling G requires a 50-foot frontage on, on the street. We want to maintain this as a dwelling A neighborhood, as a historic overlay district that it is made into, which is dwelling A, and people who have buying houses and rebuilding houses to, to live in, it would be nice. The owner, I believe, is not planning to live in the house, even though that's his address, he does not live there now. He will be an absentee landlord of this. I appreciate your listening to me, and I hope you act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
Want to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Want to approve?
Second.
I'd like to, I can discuss on it.
Sure, discussion.
I'd like to say that I agree with these two gentlemen, and that we're changing the nature of this historic neighborhood, and I don't think we should do that, because it's gonna affect us in other ways. And there's currently no plan anyway for it, right? Is there, have they submitted a plan to, to, to do something there yet?
Uh, no, because they don't have the correct zoning, they need the zoning before a plan can be...
We're asking for things ahead of time, Commissioner. In other words, right now, they're barely trying to get it zoned. The plans will come later, it will go to the Historic Commission, everything, but right now, they're just seeking zoning, that's all we have on the agenda.
Well, I would urge us to vote against this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
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 I'll vote aye.
May I have a roll call, please? The yes.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay?
Who are you calling, nays or ayes?
The first is the yes, which is Commissioner Longoria, Commissioner Tetra, Commissioner De Leon, and Commissioner Mungia. And the nays, the mayor, Commissioner Gawain, and Commissioner Nys.
Yes. Okay. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public comment period. Nobody signed up for the public comment period, so we'll go ahead and go on to the next agenda item, which is items for individual consideration. Agenda item number 11, consideration in action to confirm the appointment of Jared V. Sheldon as fire chief.
Lot up there, Chief. Mayor Commissioners, in accordance with local government code, it allows the city manager to appoint a fire chief. I do want to make some comments behind it, concerns on, on my appointment. As every appointment I do and decision I make, it's, it's choreographed, it's, it's made. The great thing about Chief Sheldon, since I've seen him even prior to being an interim, he was the administrator, and any position that I put is an administrator. We have great firefighters that are already in the field. I need somebody that's behind the desk, that understands how we operate. A great budget person, as you can see, he also got, we're, our firing, we're ordering equipment that we haven't ordered in a while, because of the budget constraints. We're adding staff as well, three. So, with that said, I'm asking to confirm the appointment of the fire chief, which I believe my management team are, approved it, it's not as well, it wasn't just a decision based on mine. So I ask for your, your consideration on that, and decision wasn't made lightly, but it's made, which is best for the city.
And this is in accordance with the city charter of our...
It's accordance with local government code, we, we follow it in chapter 143 of the, with the collective bargaining agreement.
So this is an action item, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I just want to say that your brother would be very proud of who you've become.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, we have action item number 12, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation.
Good evening, mayors, city commissioners. Into the fourth, we had a resignation of one of our board members. We have a group of seven board members, currently we have six. So we're looking at, seeking appointment by the City Commission for one board member to finish the term of Mr. Celestino Fino Villarreal, which will expire on December 31st of 2019. The listing of BSC board members, the current board members, Celestino Villarreal has resigned, Ms. Anissa Ramirez, Felisa Fruchah Edge, Graham Sevier Schultz, Michael Limas, Commissioner Ben Nys, Commissioner Evoel Mungia. We have applicants, Mr. Omar Hernandez, Amy Fraser, Carlos Guerrero, Ricardo Rios, Humberto Garcia, and Sagrave Levens.
How much time is left on that, on Fino's?
About the remainder of this year to December, and one, about a year, three months.
So you've still got over a year?
Yes, that's a year and the remainder of this.
Whoever the next board member is clearly understands that it's only for that term, and that'll serve as a term, correct?
Yes. And there's still an opportunity to serve that term, and they are able to, based on legal interpretation, they'll be able to be appointed for a two-year term with a max of three years and three months.
Okay.
I'd like to move to appoint Omar Hernandez.
Second.
Is...
I'm serious, me, first of all, okay. I'm sorry, there's, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Well, we're gonna review the policy that we have, and as I read it, I think they have to have an application in, and I don't think he does.
Commissioner, we've, we've had this discussion before. Previous interpretation was that the applications can be up, up until the time of the meeting. Applicat, or even the names can be referred by a commissioner.
I don't think that's what the resolution says.
No, and I...
It says if there's an application...
There is an application in, because this is a past member, so his application has been in for a few years now.
I think the limit is one year. It can be on file for one year, according to the resolution.
Yeah, Mr. Hernandez went for a two-year term, and then he wasn't reappointed for a second term, so it could be still split and could be appointed at your discretion.
I'm just pointing out what I read in the resolution, or the other, yeah, the previous resolution, you have to have an application, and if you don't have it in on time, then as long as there's one on file that hasn't been more than a year on file, then they're qualified.
My motion stands.
I'm sorry.
So we have a first and a second?
Right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
One nay?
No, we have, we have, we have a majority, majority of rules. So it's Mr. Omad, who's it?
Omar Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hmm, sure.
Next, we have action item number 13, consideration in action to appoint one member to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Committee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. I would like to start off by asking for a moment of silence. Sorry. This is for our former member, Jose Escapito, who served from June 6, 2017, to March 15, 2019. I didn't expect to get emotional.
Mayor Commissioners, the City of Brownsville Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is to preserve, protect, maintain, and improve and enhance its natural resources, parkland recreation opportunities for all current generations. Current members, District 1, and then applicants are on your right-hand side, based on districts. We have nine applicants and five vacancies. So as you can see, if you look at it, the, on the very top part, Jerry Hatley, Anissa Ramirez, Myra Garza, Dylan Vander, Vanderford, those are the individuals that are up for appointment, and those that are applied are on the bottom. So we're looking for five of those.
Well, I think the action item on this one states one, so we'll have to come back for them, the remaining.
So as of now to correct it, we'll just do one. As you can see in the bottom, you do have Ofelia Garza, Orlando Garza, Oscar Cruz, Miguel Gaetan, George Santoy, Jolie Rubio, Benjamin Del Angel, Andrea Torres, and Leinhart.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Is it a formality or an informality? Can we just say that we want to appoint the five members today?
We can, I believe, we can, if the commission approves to say let's just appoint, you have that availability as well. So have you...
And then also on here, there was an updated presentation, Dylan Vanderford, who is eligible for reappointment, did get their application in, as did Myrita Garza, and they are both interested in their second terms.
Mayor, I move that we take action today to appoint all five members.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, if please, as a commission, I move to appoint the slate, and then allowing the commission to appoint one more member.
Is that her second other one?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's on the slate?
The, I believe the slate's...
You have 11 applicants and five vacancies.
But no, they're asking to reappoint it.
No, the Jerry Hatley and Anissa Ramirez cannot be...
Reappointed.
Correct.
My apologies.
My apologies.
Then I withdraw, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Then I move to appoint Dylan, Dylan Vanderford and Ms. Myrita Garza.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, those two are the people that have already served and are willing to serve again.
Correct.
That's great.
I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'd like to, I'd like to move to appoint George Santoy.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd like to move to appoint Jolie Rubio.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Benjamin Del Angel.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you got it.
You got your board.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Commissioner, and our condolences goes to our former Park and Advisory. Thank you.
Now you got item number 14.
BBC would like that to be tabled to the next city commission.
Tabled number 14. Item number 15.
Did you want to, do you have to make a motion for that? To table?
Where, where, well, we'll do, we'll do, as, as, staff, staff will remove item 14. So no table, staff will bring it back to you later.
Agenda item number 14 will be removed.
Okay.
Till the next meeting.
All right.
Next, we have action item number 15, consideration in action to appoint two regular members and two alternate members to the Building and Standards Commission.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Myrna Leal, I'm a planner with the Applying Development Services Department. The Building and Standards Commission does have certain requirements. As for our ordinance, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Historic Preservation Design Review Board, as well as the Board of the Department, have to nominate one of their board members to the Board, Building and Standards Commission. We currently have four applicants. And we have two regular, two regular member vacancies and two alternate member vacancies. So you can choose which you would like to be regular members, full-time members, and the alternate members as well.
So you need two regular members and two alternates?
And, do we make a distinction there somehow or another? Uh, it's up to you all.
And by your designation right here, where it says that Ms. Tara Pignut serves on the Historic Preservation, she's, she currently serves on that board?
Yes.
Okay.
And so who are, are the, are there any one of those two regular members that are on this list right now that wish to serve again? Or is that all, all these are...
No, right now, we have two vacancies, they are not currently, they're not, they were never on the Building and Standards Commission, they were nominated by the boards on which they currently sit. So what is listed next to them is the board that they are on right now.
Oh, okay.
And you want us to appoint four people, two regular and two alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
I apologize for any confusion.
It's okay, we just, I think we're trying to figure out, those other folks, Tara, and Francisco, and John, all serve on different boards besides applying for, for this board, okay? Is there a motion? Take the top two for the regulars and the last two for alternates? Take the top two for the regulars and the last two for alternates?
Mayor, I'd like to table to the next meeting.
Sir?
You wanted to say what?
He wants to table him.
Table.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
If you could do us a huge favor, if you could repost it to see if we can get more applicants, because it seems that we have a lot of people that are repeating in board, so maybe we can get a bigger pool.
We actually had the application open from February all the way until the end of March, I believe, and then we opened it up again throughout the month of July.
Commissioner, we'll do a better job of advertising it and placing it on different levels and reaching out to a different group, just to see we can open up that.
If we could, Mr. City Manager, maybe what we need to do is we need to get all the vacancies and do like one big page ad on the Sunday Herald or something where we're like on Facebook, and that way we can post all the openings so people can apply. And that way people are more aware of what's coming up, because I think a lot of times people don't really know.
It's kind of, yeah, you get to the city website and you're not really too sure what area interests the general public.
We can definitely, we'll definitely get that going.
Please.
All right. I have number 16.
Next, I would like to mention that agenda item number 20 will be also removed as per staff request, and I'll go ahead and read the next agenda item, which is action item number 16. There is a typo on our agenda, but everywhere that we advertise, they are asking for two alternate members. So the agenda item reads, consideration and action to appoint two alternate members to the Board of Adjustment.
So we currently have three vacancies for alternate members for the Board of Adjustment. These are the current members, as well as our one alternate that we have. And the Applying Development Services Department requests the approval of Martin Metzger and Jose Inojosa to serve as alternate members for the Board of Adjustment.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for Joey Inojosa.
Second.
All those in favor of Joe Inojosa?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'll vote for Mr. Metzger.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number 17, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint one regular member to the Historic Preservation and Design Review Board.
The Historic Preservation Design Review Board has one current opening, one vacancy. It is for the historic property owner. Our ordinance, as well as the Texas Historic Commission, does require that the people who sit on the board, or the members who sit on the board, have certain experience and knowledge and base for the decisions that they're going to be making for their community. The one that we have vacant today is number six, the historic property owner. That's the one that needs to be reappointed. We currently have two applicants, Mr. Juan Mendez, Trey Mendez, and Mr. Juan Empequeño Jr.
Ma'am, it says that Mr. Mendez isn't eligible for reappointment?
Yes, so our terms are only for two years. But because our ordinance requires certain experience, certain knowledge, Mr. Mendez has been a vital part of the board for some time, as well as other members on the board. They've served for quite some time, because as you can see, we need an architect, an architectural historian, an archaeologist, a heritage tourism professional. So they are very specific in their requirements. But we have had no problem with our board members serving for more than the two terms.
Yeah, I don't think it's the issue of them serving. It's more of an issue of can we, according to city ordinance, or whatever we've passed prior to today, actually get these two people on board? That's really the question. So I don't, I don't know.
So we do have the two applicants on here, and it is your decision on...
We, I think we'd step in there. I believe, Commissioner, if you like, I think we would, let's do that ad, let's do that. Damaris just mentioned that she posted her Facebook and got nine additional applicants that we hadn't seen before, so maybe we do that approach with these appointments. Again, for consideration, Commissioner.
I mean, they can still participate in ways where they're, you know...
Under, I'm sorry. Under 4H, it says, "The recommended term limit for service on a board is two years. However, circumstances shall allow for longer member services at the discretion of the city commission."
You need two members?
We need one.
I'll let the commission smooth.
I'm gonna motion to appoint Trey Mendez.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You got it.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number 18, consideration and action to appoint two members to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, honorable mayors and commissioners. The Planning and Zoning Commission consists of seven regular members. We currently have two members whose terms have expired. Here are the current members. And here are the applicants. The two current members have reapplied. It's Ronald Mills who serves as our chairman, and Derek Benavides who serves as secretary.
Can you go back to the previous screen?
Yes.
Now, how many people do you need? It's because, I'm gonna be honest, these things aren't very clear. It doesn't say like, I need one member, two members, and you just have a bunch of names. So it's very confusing. We really don't know if you need one member, two members, three members, four members. It's just a bunch of names.
According to the genesis, you need to appoint two members?
Two members.
Can you go back now to, I mean, forward?
That's what this is genesis. I don't know.
It does, mayor, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, which ones. This is Mr. Orozco, and I guess it's Michael Reyes. But you see, but Mr. Benavides has also expired according to this. So we have almost, we have four expired from this one. You see, if you read it, it says, Franco Orozco, 10/20/2018, which is coming up. Then you have the 5/5/2018, 10/20. So I'm trying to figure out...
You're looking at the map.
So I'm guessing it's just, the ones that are out are Mr. Ronald Mills and...
Ronald Mills and Derek Benavides. Theirs have expired.
And they're eligible for reappointment?
Yes.
I'll move to reappoint Derek Benavides.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll move to appoint Mr. Mills.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You got your two. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 19.
Action item number 19, consideration and action to adopt Resolution Number 2018 National 39, amending portions of a resolution that was adopted by the city commission on December 11, 1996, setting forth a plan for health benefits for qualified retirees from the City of Brownsville that were not covered by a collective bargaining agreement.
Honorable mayor, Mr. City Commissioner, this is a, we're trying to amend an old resolution that was adopted in December 11th of 1996. We're not changing that much, except that what we're changing is some of the language in the resolution, and we're doing a portion of it, not all of it. We are still keeping any employee, any retiree that retires with 20-year service, and let's say that if the retiree is 50 years old, he has two options to choose. And he can choose that he can pay 50% of the premium or contribution from age 50 all the way to age 65. Or he can also choose another option, which says that they will pay 100% of the premium from the age of, let's say, anything over 50, let's say 55, 55. After 55, the city picks up 100% of the retiree's premium. That has not changed. And of course, if you retired, or employee retires at the age of 55, between 55 and 65, the city contributes the entire premium for their retiree as we move forward. The, I have a PowerPoint presentation to show you some of the old language versus the new language. The old resolution did not have a number and did not have sections. But this new resolution that we're asking you to adopt tonight has a number as well as sections. The first part of the old resolution, we're gonna maintain the same language in the amended resolution, so there's no changes. On the section two, now we have a, we went ahead and put section one over with section nine. Section two has fixed, we have some changes, and it's really just a language that goes along with it, and the change is in red from the old versus what we have in the new. And all we're doing is the old one had the full premium for single coverage employee and one dependent or family coverage when applicable. We changed in that to read payment of the full insurance premium for single coverage and/or dependent coverage. We went ahead and took out the family coverage. What we're saying is as long as it has dependent coverage. On the number three, section three, again, the old resolution did not have a section, but the changes that we're having here, the old one had pursuant to TMS, TMRs requirements, we changed in that to pursuant to City of Brownsville requirements. And that's what we're making on the, on the changes on the new resolution. The, under section three, number one, again, that's something that I covered. If you're, with the city and the employee would pay 50% from age 50 all the way to 65, and that's what this is. All we're saying is that upon enrolling or appoint enrollment of an attorney group health insurance program, which, that's the only language that we're changing on that, on the new resolution. Again, the old, the old language, again, if you're, if you retire at 55, oh and forward, then the, and then the city pays for the rest. We had some changes here whereby the city finance department would submit the bills to the retirees. Well, that has changed because we now have the pledge administrator taking care of those invoices, and that's what section four says. The old section had expense may add additional family members to their coverage. We're just saying may continue to cover dependents enrolled in the coverage time, at a time of retirement. And then number, number section six, we removed, what we're putting here is if medical eligible, any supplemental policies or arrangements made with the provider would be at the retiree's own discretion and expense. Same thing here, if Medicare eligible at age 65, if retire, becomes eligible for Medicare under age 65 due to a disability, his or her coverage with the city will become secondary regardless of his or her enrollment with Medicare. Any post-65 supplemental policies would be at the retiree's own discretion and expense. On section seven, we just removed from the service, the rest of the language stays the same. And then on, on section eight, we remove the everything that's in red on the old, and we put that the plan and, and coverage for retirees will be the same as the one for active employees of the city, as may be updated from time to time. Section nine, again, the, what we have removed from the old to the new, we've removed the provisions of this resolution shall not apply to any employee who retired prior to date of the abduction of this resolution. We removed that sentence and on the new adopted resolution, or the resolution we're asking you to adopt. Again, we...
Any questions?
Mr. Granado, Mr. Lopez, and Mr. Gonzalez, in a time where you basically try to stay in your job because of your insurance instead of your pay, I see this at BISD all the time. We have teachers, administrators, that have gone well into retirement age or close to retirement age because they started as young men or women, and then they start getting hit with, how close am I to retirement? I'm eligible for retirement, yet there's plans like this that will affect me. So because I wanted to enter retirement, I can't. I choose to stay. I choose to stay around. Sometimes I still remain effective. It just depends where you're at. Sometimes you're not. And your workplace suffers because of it. So you need to remember that right now, a lot of the times in most jobs, it's not about the pay. It's about your insurance. You know, one hospital bill, you know, getting diagnosed with something, you know, is gonna severely drastically change on how you see things. So I understand where this is coming, and it's gonna work for us budget-wise, but also understand the long-term effect that these kinds of actions take. In the long, in the long term, you know, you're gonna be having those employees, I'm not saying positive or negative, I'm just saying employees, that are gonna be sticking around a couple of years because they have to face this when it comes to their insurance, when they're considering retiring. That's all I gotta say.
Pete, if I'm correct, it's dependents are the retirees. Is it the retirees as well, or just the dependents?
The only thing that the city covers is the retiree's premium or retiree's, I guess, contribution. But if you're over 55, from 55 to 65, the city will pay 100% of the premium or contribution. It's those that retire prior to 55 that they have two options. Either you go 50% from that age all the way through 65, or you pay 100% to the age of 55. And if you pay 100% to the age of 55, then after you reach 55, the city pays 100% of the premium, but only for the retiree. Any dependent that the retiree wants to cover will come out of his own pocket. And that's the way it's been, and so we're not changing that. That's been the case for, since 1990, whatever, 1996. We just did some, some changes to the language of the old resolution to the new resolution.
So they would still be able to insure their family? It just would come out of...
I'm sorry?
They would still be able to insure dependents just out of their...
No, they can insure them, but they have to take care of that.
Out of their pocket.
The entire, the entire cost, yes.
So are these just language changes? Does this, these changes represent a savings to the city?
I'm sorry?
Do these changes represent a savings to the health plan?
Because the city can increase the contribution at a future period, the answer is yes.
Okay.
And Commissioner, and I think when we talk about healthy and sustainable, we focus on the sustainable budget, is we don't go, we're not shooting for the savings. We're shooting for to ensure that we have a backup plan on any kind of big on, and we talk about it, I call it a non-assigned fund. It's like a savings account, but for the health benefits. So you don't see it in the savings of the city itself. You see it in when, with the current active employees, that we don't have to, by saving this part, we have the backup not to increase the contribution of those who are actively doing it. This system has been, have served the retirees very well for many years, 20, 30 years. They've lived on a great, on a great system. We also gotta consider those who are active as well, Commissioner, the ones who are here doing it. So it's a balance.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, guys, this is a, item number 19.
Motion to approve.
I will second because I know that you're an expert on this.
She wouldn't let us vote on it if it was not...
I don't know enough about this.
It's still a great deal.
That's right. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we will continue to agenda item number 21, consideration and action to approve the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation fiscal year 2019 annual budget.
That's why you should always know a doctor.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez, commissioners and city staff. My name is Anisa Ramirez, and I am the proud chairwoman of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. I am here with our wonderful director, Rebecca Castillo, who will be presenting our 2018-2019 budget. Before she starts, I would like to thank all of you for your service to our beautiful city and my hometown. I love Brownsville zoos, museums, restaurants, parks, walk chalk and bike trails, farmer's market, flea market, festivals, its proximity to the beaches and Mexico, and that it continues to grow. To me, Brownsville is a hidden gem. Taking on this leadership role at first, I felt somewhat uneasy. I knew I wanted to take the role, but being responsible for millions of dollars of taxpayers' monies can be intimidating. I feel blessed to have exceptional board members and a... I feel blessed to have exceptional board members and a fine BCIC staff guiding me because they have made it less complicated and less daunting. Let me tell you about our board members. We each honor everyone's opinions, thoughts and/or experience, and then we make the best possible decision for the betterment of our city. We put our egos and personal agendas, if any, aside to really focus on the matter at hand. Yes, this can be quite difficult at times, but we remind each other that it is not about us, but about every single person in the city, because every single person in the city matters. Thank you, have a good evening, and now Ms. Castillo will present our budget.
And thank you for your service, appreciate it very much, okay?
Thank you. Again, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I'm gonna go through this presentation for our fiscal year 2019 annual budget. In the past, we have typically brought it in as part of the city budget, and this time around, in best, in terms of transparency, best practices, and just to keep you on the know as to what BCIC is moving forward with, we'll present you the budget individually for you to be able to review it and know what the board has approved. And I'll just go a little bit back and give you some background of what has led to this budget and how it is strategic in moving forward the city of Brownsville. So we'll start a little bit with the BCIC strategic plan update. A little bit of background, BCIC has been in existence since 2001 and received its first disbursement of sales tax dollars in 2002. Its annual allocation is half of a cent of every sales tax dollar that is generated from shopping and dining. An average of $4.5 million are allocated yearly to BCIC, and the other one-fourth of a cent is allocated to GPEC for economic development purposes. Over $60 million has been reinvested in the, into the community, not accounting also the $35 million investment for the sports park. It has a seven board, seven-member Board of Directors that is appointed by the City Commission and may be appointed for a maximum of two, of two, two-year terms, a total of four years. Our BCIC-funded projects are required a 60-day comment period and to have a public hearing. They also require final approval by the City Commission. That's the difference in terms of BCIC to GPEC, BCIC is required to undergo that 60-day comment period. For the first 10 years of its existence, it operates with the Department of the City of Brownsville. For those 10 years, the BCIC functioned mostly as a project manager for the construction of the Brownsville Sports Park. Projects were mostly funded on a once-a-year basis with an opening of the application cycle in September, application deadline in December, presentation usually in January, and project agreement would start in late in June. It's approximately a year and a half process to be able to award funds and move forward capital in, in partnership grants and opportunity, investment in our community. In 2012, the BCIC Board of Directors took action to move, okay, transition it to a standalone economic development organization. In 2012, the BCIC Board of Directors took action to become a standalone organization. The focus changed and there was little efforts, investment in the Brownsville Sports Park for those few years. Funding mechanisms, grant cycles were put in place. Change in management, opening up positions, staff were required to reapply. The project coordinator was promoted to executive director and was in the, in the position for approximately two years. Current executive director was hired on November 2014, leading to four years this coming November. All staff was rehired for the exception of the executive director. Sorry, it's a slight. Moving forward in 2017, when I came on board, the, one of the biggest things that we wanted to move forward with is to take actions and to move the BCIC board to take action and direction strategically. So we tried to move forward with, trying to have our board support strategic planning. So finally, in, in early 2017, we were able to move forward with that effort. There was a change in direction and strategic leadership. BCIC has invested on strategic planning for its board members and staff. Aside from undergoing the strategic planning process, what we have undergone is how we have undergone training to understand what strategic planning means and how it's integral in moving and giving direction to our organization. There has been a change in the mission of BCIC and it's no longer just funding quality of life projects, but being an ecosystem that allows positive economic impact for Brownsville. The first strategic plan for BCIC was adopted in May 15, 2017. So this past May, we turned a year old on the first, it's a three-year strategic plan, 2017 to 2020 Economic Development Strategic Plan for BCIC, and we have completed the first year. Again, I'll skip through this slide, but basically is, give us a meeting on strategic planning and basically is planning for the management and activity as to set priorities, but also it allows us to measure at the end of the day that we're being, if we're being successful or not, and restrategize and move, redirect as needed. Effective board characteristics were identified early last year. The board, in a, in a group effort and meeting in the strategic planning meetings, identified the record, the effective board characteristics, and they all agreed that it was very important to have strong leadership, decision-making, related backgrounds and expertise, communication, reliability, consistency, vision, strategic and future focus, strong planning skills, creative thinkers, appreciators, respect, the respect for diversity, diversity, and no silo mentality. So there's an agreement that that was kind of the appropriate recipe mix to be able to move forward. The board's primary governance, it was, there's a clear idea of what the board's primary governance responsibility is. The decision-making that provides the most positive impact to the people organization being represented. Establish policy and give direction. Decide on that set of strategic choices that will direct staff and set the platform for accomplishing short and long-term goals. Achieving the vision and the mission. Identifying three ingredients for achieving mission, the mission and the, and the, the vision and the mission. Vision and mission should be aligned to decision-making as it relates to funding that provides the most impact to the Brownsville community. Ask yourself, and that's what we ask our board members when we had our retreats and our one-year recap, is how can we, how can we be funding partners in projects, activities that foment economic growth in Brownsville, Texas? What is BCIC's role? To be funding partners? What limitations does BCIC has when trying to personal sell direct projects? In order to have a winning game plan, a strategic plan that makes Brownsville, Texas the destination city of choice, the following three main ingredients are necessary. Amenities attractions, what do we sell? What makes us different from other communities? Sustainability, funding. Recognition, exposure, doing a good job at promoting our city, others, sharing our story. And that's kind of one of the biggest efforts with our marketing efforts, we have been trying to showcase more what BCIC is undertaking in terms of funding and investing in their community, but also showcasing the wonderful things that Brownsville has. The five-step strategic course is basically executing the five steps for setting an effective strategic course. Organize, assess your readiness and approach. Analyze, collect data, take a look at where you are today and where you want to go tomorrow. Conduct a SWOT analysis. The BCIC board and staff underwent that process. Plan, select from among our options, what will be the main priorities, goals, objectives, strategies, tactics. We develop that plan, we have, we have a plan of action. Implement, take action, execute the plan. Monitor performance, what has been accomplished, what cannot be accomplished, what priorities changed, evaluate. In terms of staff, BCIC staff is meeting tomorrow morning to look through all those strategies, through all those goals and objectives, and ensure that we're out, we're taking the necessary steps to implement this plan. What are the obstacles? What needs to be undergone to make things happen? So we continuously evaluate this plan, and we'll also meet with our board to be able to ensure that we're in the, in the right direction. The 2017-2020, 2017-2020 Economic Development Strategic Plan. The goals that are identified in the adopted plan are develop a culture of strategic execution, develop a board culture that promotes performance, become a leading, leading economic development corporation, prioritize disbursement of BCIC funds, asset management, become a destination city for sports and recreation. Strong emphasis in the past year, in 2017, we have strongly focused on funding projects, activities that create a positive economic impact. Focus on sports and recreation and tourism, small business development and retention, downtown development, management of BCIC assets, the sports park, and also undergoing that processes too, finding that collaborative relationship with the city in terms of its operation and maintenance. Promoting the positive in Brownsville via the Discover Brownsville campaign. Collaboration and sending a message of strong economic forefront as we now coexist with the, with GPEC and collaborate with other partners. Asset management, just to give you a few examples of what we have worked on, primarily as well-known that BCIC has invested on the sports park. So here's an aerial picture of the investment that we have. This, there's development, but there's also undeveloped areas to trying to get a better idea of what we own and how we can potentially find opportunities of investment to maximize the opportunities in tourism and sports and recreation with this venue, and also generating a revenue source. Investment on infrastructure for sports and recreational tourism. BCIC invested on the turf, I'm putting it up to standards. It was an investment that was undergone the past year and a half, so we haven't moved forward with that. We're currently undergoing installation of a scoreboard as well. Partnership with FC Brownsville, investment on sports and recreational tourism. We're able to put, again, one check mark on that strategic plan. For now, we have collaborated and allowed for FC Brownsville to have exclusivity, and we have a sports park team now, which is the Coyotes, or soccer team that is a, being a, those efforts are being undergone by the FC Brownsville, is a club, football club Bronsvy. So in that effort, there has been collaboration and opportunities where we haven't identified that we're able to assist entities who are re-undergoing this effort. We don't have to go and reinvent the wheel and do things ourselves, but if we're able to partner with entities who are already undergoing this effort, we maximize the opportunity and move forward a lot faster. Downtown development, in the past year, we have invested over $325,000 in, from BCIC on the restoration and replacement of the Market Square Dome. We have also invested in the Main Street District in terms of a, a beautification project. And so there's, there's, there's activity of BCIC that's currently undergoing in downtown, and it's a very important aspect, and also in the trends that we're getting from the requests and applications, there's a strong emphasis on the focus to be in downtown. Small business development and retention, we have spearheaded, we're going for the second year of the Discover Brownsville campaign. We're looking at, working with Main Street District and collaborating their efforts with the Brownsville Chamber as well with funding their Women in Leadership Forum, but also seeking opportunities and open the lines of communication as to what else we can empower and enhance with our BCIC funding. Building relationships with business owners. Our staff has been really good in, in building those relationships and ensuring that we're getting the appropriate feedback to see how we can help in improving the perspective that people have in terms of investing, investing in Brownsville. The open discussion that we had, our retreat, our one-year recap of the strategic plan was, we started off with having a series of questions. That's kind of like the dynamic that has changed a little bit as to we're having a strategic plan and focusing on developing that ecosystem of economic development and economic impact is being more conscious as to the projects that we're being, we're, we're investing on. So we asked them, what are the next steps since we have been undergoing this, this strategic plan for one year? How do we expedite execution? And that's why we're having periodically meetings with the staff to ensure that we're taking necessary steps. What additional priorities, focus areas should be considered? We have been undergoing this plan for a year, is there any redirection? Is there any change of a, a direction? Is there any additional priorities that we need to identify? When considering the projects, activities, I asked them to ask themselves the following questions. Is this just a feel-good project? How does it align to economic development? Does it align to current strategic plan? What is the overall consensus helps meeting the bigger goals? Does this priority activity has a return of investment, economic impact for Brownsville, Texas? In that aspect, we're also looking at getting software and a model that would allow us to evaluate pre and post investment in projects that will allow us to evaluate what will possibly be our return of investment and economic impact prior to investing, to have an idea of what will be our, our return of investment, but also evaluating post event, post project as to if it was a best decision to undergo and undertake. Can we maximize the opportunity? Those are the questions that we're asking them to ask. Can its, can its impact be measured, performance measures? Understand the difference between benefiting the community and investing the community. That's the biggest thing where most of the time, we're considered more of a community-based, and there's a lot of effort and investment in our community, but there's also the need to invest in the community in terms of events, in terms of activities, in terms of bringing and generating dollars, sales tax dollars for Brownsville. So how do we target the outsiders to come and visit Brownsville? How do we target them to come and invest money in Brownsville? So it's a, as those outsiders and we invest those monies in outside people coming in and events for people to come from the outside, what we're encountering is that our sales tax dollars are, we limited the linkage of people going elsewhere and they spend their dollars here, or we have additional sales tax dollars that's, that come to our, our Brownsville, City of Brownsville, and therefore come also to the economic development organizations, which allow us to continue reinvesting in the city of Brownsville and making it all what it can be. After the planning retreat that we have on June the 25th, there were just some mayor suggestion, minor suggestions. I mean, the strategic plan is still the same direction, the same goals, same objectives. There was just a few concerns or a few suggestions from the board in asking the executive director to continue building the net, building the working relationship with the interim city manager and maintain open lines of communication. Identify downtown development opportunities and earmark them in the budget. Some possible opportunities are the facade program, rent subsidy, waiving building permit fees, Main Street program, the Federal Business and Innovation, the Film Commission. Determine what to do with a partnership grant cycle. Work on the BCIC open house, trying to promote the alumni and how we can capture that resource of the alumni's having so much background and experience, how we can bring in that resource into BCIC. Seek new BCIC board member appointment, which we did that today. The executive director and staff to continue building relationships and communicating with legislators at the national level and periodically meeting in terms of BCIC efforts. So in, in essence, the focus that was identified a year ago is still strong, the direction is still strong, and as we move forward, we're looking at trying to accomplish a lot of those goals, objectives and strategies this coming year, possibly allowing us to complete this three-year plan possibly in two years. So there's a lot of, it's a lot of effort undergoing from our Board of Directors in trying to move Brownsville forward. What you're gonna encounter here, I gave you this history just to give you an idea of what BCIC has been undergoing, but what you're gonna find in the next few slides, it basically gives you our itemized budget, overall budget. And if you can see from the, from line item number seven, we're looking at $4.5 million that we are projecting to get in sales tax for fiscal year 2019. With this amount, this is a conservative amount, this is based on the trends of sales tax that we have got in the past three, four years, we're comfortable with this number. Aside for this 4.5 projected sales tax dollars, we do have approximately, if we look, I'm gonna take you back to the last slide, and from item 39 to 43, we have unrestricted fund balance as of June of 2018 in approximately $3.1 million. Of those $3.1 million, we also have a rainy day fund mounting to $1.5 million. So those monies are not being touched, they're being reserved for a rainy day, for an, and if there's a big project that we can invest on, we can bank and build up on that amount. Or also in terms, if we get impacted negatively by the sales tax dollars, we can tap into those dollars and be able to continue funding at the current levels.
One of the things that I saw on the previous slide was that the sports park upkeep that we pay is over 700 and, was it $720,000?
Last fiscal year, it was $700,000.
Okay. Have you ever brought before your board the idea of maybe a sponsorship on the sports park?
The way that we have it structured?
To alleviate costs and put more money into the overall pot of quality of life in Brownsville?
The way that we have structured right now is with a maintenance and operation agreement with the City of Brownsville, that responsibility is at the City of Brownsville to seek naming rights and sponsorships for the sports park. But it's conversations that we're currently having, and I recently met with Mr. Lopez in reference to that.
And I can jump in, Mayor Commissioner, Commissioner, on regarding this on the Brownsville Sports Park, is we are looking for naming rights that can, and the naming rights can be specifically for maintenance operation.
Right.
What we're doing as well, and I want to commend PCIC for working closely with this, is we manage to say, the city, we're gonna, or take the, the sports park in maintenance, and the money that they're not paying the city to maintain it is going into the downtown revitalization. I've always pushed, and I think BCIC, I thank you, is a program that when they come in for permits or for items they need for commercial, they have the opportunity to give them that loan or offer them that money, so there is that incentive. So we are working hand in hand. So as we move forward, Commissioner, you will see we're working on the naming rights RFP, which you will see be coming out eventually.
Exciting. Exciting. Yeah, because that's, it's just such a huge cost and it's more than any park or any golf course the city has ever paid for, and it's just time to really start chipping away at ways that we can cut down costs.
Yeah, in the past, it has been about 58% of our BCAC budget. With the changes that we underwent and looking at line item number 15, we're looking at $520,000, going from $700 last year to $520,000 for fiscal year 2019. The savings on that line item will be, I guess, redistributed into line items that promote and has investment on downtown. So it has a focus in terms of that. So if you, what you have on this slide that you have on the screen, it's the sales tax revenues, the administrative expenditures, including our admin budget. And then on the next slide, you have your self-direct initiatives. The way that it was broken down our budget before, it had more of a self-direct, board direct, a line item which amounted like to $300,000. And then we have partnership grants and capital project grants. The way that it was structured in that manner was that whatever didn't fit into the partnership grant or the capital project was like a discretionary fund for the board. What we did is that we restructured this for the self-direct initiatives, these are the initiatives, this is the board-driven items, which is item 22 to 29, which is partnership grants, the capital project grant, the downtown facade improvement beautification grants, Main Street preservation grants, the Film Commission, cultural destination city events. For the difference between the partnership grant and line item 22, that partnership grant will be that cycle of events that gets submitted by nonprofit organizations. That line item 27, cultural destination city events, those will be identified by BCAC for automatically, once fiscal year begins and we move forward with that, we'll be able to identify like Ciglovia or other projects like the binational 10K that we had with Mr. Amigo, the past Mr. Amigo with the Teletone, we'll be able to identify projects that will be earmarked under those line items. So there's great opportunities and then, I guess, basically what we did is that we had approximately $1.4 million that were basically very dedicated to partnership and capital grants. What we did is that we distributed them and we also added the savings from the sports park and we're being more strategic in terms of the opportunities that we're maximizing on.
I see a lot of downtown initiatives and it just could be because it's very small lettering, but I also would just like to remind the board that the board-driven initiatives should canvas across the entire community, into the southmost area, into District 3, into District 2.
Yeah, and we knew that possibly, yes, we knew that possibly we're going to have to add that question. And what we did discuss is that we base this investment in line items in the budget based on the trends that we have in the past few years as to requests by the organizations seeking funding and the city departments. But at the same time, through small business development, through other efforts in terms of the Discover Bronsville campaign, we're still not neglecting the rest of the city. And there's still opportunities, again, going back to the last slide, on line item 43, after we have this balanced budget, we have savings, we end up having a, estimating the beginning of fiscal year 2019, we'll have about $1.8 million unrestricted amounts that can be based on your feedback today, based on possible initiatives, we have some monies to tap into. And that amount, $1.8 million right now, by the end of September 30th, I'm anticipating that will probably be probably $2.3 million. So I think in considering where we had been in the past, usually every fiscal year, we'll start the year with about $300,000. Or as soon as money under restricted amount, restricted line item became available, it was given out. So we're trying to, I guess, we need to be stable, be consistent, so we can continue investing in our community. So that's kind of like the strategy in terms of the budget. If we continue this trend in the next three years, I anticipate that we'll probably be able to start the fiscal year with a $4.5 million in the bank. And then any additional sales tax that starts coming in on the next fiscal year, we start banking it or identifying initiatives that we can be able to move forward. But in essence, that's our budget. I think that for now, some of those downtown items, line items are placeholders as we try to go through the legality issues of what's eligible, what is not, but everything's looking very positive and able to move forward with that. And I would have thanked Commissioner Niese and Mr. Michael Lima as our board members for serving in our budget committee. This is the first time we undergo the budget committee process with, I guess, rather than just staff spearheading the budget, and I think we all did a phenomenal job in being able to have a balanced budget and still reflect savings that we can tap in in the future.
So I have some comments. First of all, I was fortunate to be the chair when we hired you and I remain very pleased in the choice. Thank you so much for that great presentation and thank you, Anisa, for taking the board to the place that our board always wanted to be. However, I will say that although I do support economic development, I also strongly support quality of life and you don't need to disconnect them.
No, definitely not.
There are many projects that are both quality of life as well as return on investments and all of the financial statements that you made. So I would urge you as a chair and as a director to remain true but shifted from your original mission.
Definitely.
Because there are so many things that we need in Bronsville that cannot come out of the regular city budget that you can do.
Yes, and I think that's what we have been mainly strategizing from the standpoint, and staff has had the conversation of how we're community-based and how there's a disparity that in some areas, community development doesn't seem to be under the economic development umbrella, but the truth, the fact is that we are community development and it's under the umbrella of economic development. So we have a focus and that focus is still implies quality of life. But I guess what we're trying to be more strategic in the sense is that other than just investing on quality of life projects, we want to establish performance measures and want to be able to be able to see that there's a return of investment because we're trying to maximize those dollars so we can continue generating more to continue investing in the community.
I totally agree. Well done.
Ms. Castillo, what's the current status on the sports park? This committee gave you the asset because we felt that in the past, it was dragging your budget down.
Yes.
And I guess now we're starting to see the light after many, many years.
Definitely.
And I think that was one of the things that cleared up, so I want to thank Mr. Lopez. I want to thank Celestino Villarreal because Tino was really the one that really pushed for BCIC to really give you guys back the park so you actually have a generating, an asset to generate some sort of revenue. And we just want to see how we can help out because for me, if we're able to alleviate that and we can plug in that $700,000 hole, which I think, once we figure out what's going on, I think you should have even more money available for other projects. And I do want to share Commissioner Gowan's sentiment that I do believe that you guys have a very important function when it comes to quality of life, and I think that two, type A and type B balance each other out when we both focus quality of life and economic development. So I do believe that that is wonderful.
And in answer to your question in reference to the sports park, we have come full circle where there has been a lot of things that we have had to address, and one of the biggest things has been that ownership agreement that we had with the city. So in terms of interpretation of what it is, what is not, the way that it's interpreted in legal counsel has guided us is that the ownership agreement is in place. So the developed areas of the sports park belong to the city. We just need to undergo the transfer of the deed. But we did have commitment to having conversations with the city and we have agreed to find, we found a happy medium where we can work together, collaborate. They're the experts in maintaining and operating the sports park, but at the same time, how we can maximize that venue without continuing to impact the BCAC budget or the city budget. So those are, those are those opportunities in terms of the naming rights and we can bring some of those dollars, that should reduce the cost. It's a win-win situation for the city and for BCAC to reduce that cost. So there's opportunity there, but also in terms of the conversation we have had with the city is that they're going to provide us a proposal where they will be able to do the maintenance and operation at a lower cost, tapping into the naming rights also, but also come to a balance where in terms of that negotiation, there's a little bit more investment from the city, less from BCAC, opportunity for revenue generating, but also we shift a little bit some of those efforts into the rest of the city, which primarily some of the requests have been for downtown right now. So that's kind of like, in coming full circle, it has been an eye-opener in terms of things that we have undergone, but it seems like the best approach is to kind of, the city to give us a proposal that is performance-based, that has the liberals, that meets the maintenance and operation of the sports park, and it also minimizes the cost at the city level and BCAC as well. So it's working in progress, but I think we're coming out to a proposal next Tuesday that we'll soon bring for your consideration.
How many years have you been with BCAC?
November will be four years.
Wow.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Well done.
This is an action item. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, Rebecca. Thank you. Item number 22.
Action item number 22, consideration action authorizing the filing of the fiscal year 2018 grant application with the Federal Transit Administration, Section 5310 program, enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities programs authorized by the 49 U.S.C. Chapter 53, Title 23 United States Code, for self-certification to use for capital project to acquire rolling stock ADA complimentary para transit vehicle.
I'm going to move to limit discussion to one minute.
Yes, because we, I have Girl Scouts waiting for me at the library.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. We're here tonight to request your consideration and action to apply and execute for the fiscal 2018 Section 53 grant program with the Federal Transit Administration. This Section 53 grant program aims to improve mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities by removing barriers to transportation services and expanding transportation mobility Annually, the Federal Transit Administration apportion's fundings through administrative formula and principal authority in administrating this program. The City of Bronsville Bronsville Metro is the designated recipient and allocates the Section 53 funds. The department published, solicited, an outreach for subrecipient proposals by proposing, by posting public notices in the Bronsville Herald, El Nuevo Heraldo, and the department's website. A 60-day call for projects timeframe was provided. No grant applications were received. This action causes Bronsville Metro to self-certify for Section 5310 funds. And this round of funding, $168,329 is coming through the federal portionment. The city's contribution is $29,705. The local match will be from the city's public transportation funds fiscal year 2018 and 2019 budget. The federal share of eligible capital cost is at 80% and the local match is at 20%. The eligible capital project will be used to acquire rolling stock, rolling stock and preventive maintenance.
I want to thank you for reaching out for this grant and making sure that we can enhance our fleet for our senior and disabled riders. This means a lot to them, so I would gladly like to second Commissioner DeLeon's motion.
All right, now we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Action item number 23, consideration action to request authorization to approve the award
for the construction of cell four at the City of Bronsville landfill.
I hear a motion. Just kidding.
Could you, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, tonight requesting your approval to award a contract for the construction of cell number four at the city landfill to Environmental Industry Services Group Incorporated out of Houston, Texas, the low responsive bidder in the amount of $2,438,571. The development of the cell number four at the landfill is to achieve a six-year additional disposal capacity while sufficiently improving the disposal operations. This project is part, is the part three of the year of the city's landfill year capital development plan and which will result in the benefit of the City of Bronsville and the surrounding community. Public Works recommends this project to be awarded to Environmental Industrial Services Group. Funding is in place.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Next, we have action item number 24, consideration action to order contract for the purchase, delivery, installation, maintenance and technical support for downtown surveillance camera system.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, I would like to present this procurement. The purchasing department went out for proposals. We received four proposals from four different companies. Before you, we bring you a staff recommendation, which is the highest-ranked firm, Extreme Security and Fire out of Bronsville, Texas. This project would be for a lump sum in the amount of $448,000. And it will include all the hardware, the software, installation, all-inclusive, with the one-year warranty. And then also, we have the option that we're including for an additional three-year extended warranty, and also, we're also including a technical support 24/7. We're looking at a completion time of late November for the installation of 40 cameras. Each camera contains a camera at the bottom, and by the way, I have the MIS department and the police department. I'm going to allow the police department to give you some briefing about how this system is going to work. So basically, we're looking about to install 40 cameras with the licenses that they require, all the cabling. POV is going to be working together with Public Works to run all the electrical work and also the traffic department is going to be involved.
The five, well, the half a million dollars that this is about to cost us, where is that coming from?
Commissioner, it was authorized, $200,000 was authorized previously. What we did this year was we had open COs, which means it's money encumbered, open PO, sorry, purchase orders that were encumbered from previously. So what we're going through is through all these items, trying to figure out any money that's been encumbered. So that's what I'll bring to you on Monday, which is also additional funding as well. So we saw this project as an opportune time where we'll bring in the additional funding as well.
I just think it's half a million dollars for a very small area to be monitored.
It's actually the downtown district. I would like to have Officer DeLeon to give you a briefing about the system, how it's going to work.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Louis DeLeon. I'm a member of the Bronsville Police Department where I'm assigned to the Office of Fiscal Management. Back in August of 2017, several of us were approached with the idea of creating a security camera grid for a portion of the downtown overlay district. The objective was to create a framework of security cameras that would be deployed throughout our streets and alleys. The objective resolution was to improve the quality of life and safety for our community. During this time, a committee was formed with representatives of City Bronsville Finance, MIS and the police department to bring this idea to fruition. And for the past 12 months, the committee has studied various camera systems available on the market, met with vendors and done site visits. Today, we bring forth what we believe is the best solution for the City of Bronsville and the highest in the industry standard. This project would consist of 40 access cameras that would be mounted on existing traffic poles where they would provide a four-way, 360-degree view. And in essence, within this grid, one view would pick up where another one ended. And in addition, each of these 40 cameras would have a point-to-zoom, a PTZ camera that would allow us a zoom function when necessary. Now, these cameras would prove invaluable for viewing live events as well as investigative functions for past incidents. And the plan is that they will be monitored by BPD dispatch and by officers soon to be stationed at our newly created San Fernando substation. I can tell you certainty that projects such as these have proven successful in other Texas cities and across the US, and at this time, it is my sincere and professional opinion that this project would be a great asset to the City of Bronsville.
I think I can address Commissioner Tepcho's concerns too. As many people have noticed, downtown, there's a very vibrant and robust momentum building. There's new businesses, there's entertainment, there's a lot of businesses that are contemplated, and there's still a perception that it's dangerous downtown. And we want to dispel this perception and provide security for our citizens so they can feel safe when they come down here because we have a blighted downtown area that needs help. And I don't think anybody can disagree that we need to help change the opinion of what Bronsville's downtown is. Matter of fact, just this morning, at a meeting with the Mayor Matamoros, they're contemplating a very similar project in their tourist area as well, so people from Bronsville feel secure when they go over there. And it will also help, I think, with police in solving problems, crimes that are occurring. And once... And once criminals find out that there's a camera grid down there, they're not gonna go messing around down there. So it's a very great deterrent.
I don't know if you're, in your packets, there's photos of what we're proposing?
I, I mean, I, I, I believe in cameras. I have cameras all around my home. I just think that half a million dollars is a lot of money when we have a lot of streets that need to be paved. That's just my, it's nothing against what you're doing.
Right, absolutely.
And we appreciate everybody's opinion. Um, is everybody, this is a, an action item. Is everybody ready for, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Sir, a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Action item number twenty-five, consideration action to amend resolution number two thousand twelve dash zero zero five in regards to the board appointment policy.
Mayor, I placed this item on the agenda so that we can, uh, bring up to date on the resolution, and I'd like to move that we change the wording on the language to the appointment policy that all members serving on our current, or on our current boards and future members, that they serve on one board specifically, not more than one.
Right now, that, the, uh, language is, uh, they can serve on two. Is, is that...
Correct. Yes.
J, I think, is the sub-paragraph. Is that what you're trying to change?
Yes.
That's, I, I was trying to fi- what I was hoping for, I didn't get a chance, and I don't mean to be critical, but I was trying to see a re- uh, some sort of red line as to what the difference is between this one and what, what was proposed, and I didn't see that, Commissioner. That's the only thing I was, that's the only thing...
What is the proposed language?
And my apologies, I didn't include that in, in doing so, I didn't, I didn't even forward that to the, to the city manager and the staff. I'm so sorry about that.
So the, the one on, on the table here is the new one, proposed one, or the old one?
This is, this is the old one, right?
This is the old one.
I would point out that there is no provision to remove the current board members that might serve on two boards, and we just appointed three more tonight that are serving on two other boards. So, I don't know what your plan is.
Well, you know, the only thing that I would have liked is just to have a red line to say what you want, and then when is it gonna be effective? Is it gonna be grandfathered? If, if you guys could address those two issues, I would...
I just, my only concern was on term limits on, on, uh, Section four H, on term of the recommended limit for service on board members. I'm sorry. No, that's the wrong one. I am so sorry.
Is it J?
It's J.
J. To change it to one.
Is that, is there any other changes that...
No, sir.
And that would include any board members that are serving now?
Correct. And also, if we could add...
But I mean, when would this change be effective? In other words, if you already have people serving on boards, should we not give them the courtesy of finishing out whatever terms they have? I don't know.
How would they determine which board they stay on? And also, do we get rid of the three guys we appointed tonight?
I don't think that any of the people that were appointed tonight were serving on more than one board.
Yes, there were three of them.
Yeah, that's what we were...
Then that would be their choice.
They can select what, what board they, they want to be on.
Could, could anybody entertain a motion to table, not because it's...
I'll move to table.
To, to...
We're...
Just so that we can have a little bit more discussion on it and then bring it up in a couple of weeks?
No, I mean, I'm just thinking it's, um, it's important, I think, that we, that we discuss this right now and try to figure out that whether if a, a, a current board member is serving on two boards so they can decide where to sit, uh, what board to continue on, and, and also add to see if we could, every commissioner can have the, um, opportunity to appoint a board member to all the boards that are out there, make it more, you know, fair, I guess.
I, that, that's, that's a little bit, again, I, I don't mind any, in respect, all people's opinions with regard, but we don't know what I'm dealing with ahead of time when you get to the agenda, when you're trying to resolve something or trying to change something. All we got was what was there before.
I would ask what the urgency is, what the urgency to do this right now is.
I mean, I don't know. Is there a motion on, on the floor?
I have a motion to table.
Is there a second for that?
I'm gonna second it. I'm, I'm not opposed to the proposed changes. In fact, I myself tried to change it to only one board several, a commission ago, and that was voted down. So I certainly, um, support that, but I would like to see the new writing before voting on it.
And I think we have a next meeting is within the next, uh, two weeks from now?
The ne- next meeting is...
We have a budget meeting, but then again, we have another one coming up within two weeks from now, if, if, you know...
September fourth is the next meeting.
I think the, the only change would be from two boards to one. That would be the only change.
But we just appointed three people tonight that are on two boards. We don't know how to get them off. You're not adding, adding language to remove them if they're in violation of the resolution and you're adding another, uh, provision.
I don't see violation in the resolution. I just see it's, it's just to change the language on Section J, changing it to one mem- uh, to one, uh...
Okay, but we, we appointed three people tonight that are on two different boards.
Correct.
Okay, so...
So at this time, Joe Lee, being one of the example, when you appointed Joe Lee, and I appointed Joe Lee to another one, Joe Lee would have to, at this point, decide which one he's gonna remain on.
So is that the language of one in there?
Correct. May I ask the attorney, what would be, what would you suggest?
As far as the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I mean, to be specific, your language, like, you want me to...
And see, and when is it gonna be effective? In other words, do, do we...
Immediately.
I'm, huh?
Is there, is there an urgency? I mean, is there a rush that it can't wait till the next meeting?
Commissioner Monqueya, is there an urgency?
No, there's no urgency, but I'm just saying if, I, I don't see the difference between...
Don't you think we should think this out and put proper language?
Sure.
I mean, it's on the agenda. I don't see what the issue is prolonged.
Wait, just a second, just a second. We're not gonna get this out of, out of... We have a discussion as to, I think, right now, you, you...
To table.
Or, to table, and you're saying there's an urgency, and I think probably we need to figure out, uh, what the, the motion and the second to table. Now we'll take a vote, okay?
What did, uh...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Point of order, what, can you, uh, into the mic, please, Counsel? I always do the same mistake. So I guess, uh, the point of order was what your recommendation was. Can you just repeat it, 'cause I couldn't hear you, ma'am?
I think the question was asked what, uh, the language would be for the motion to amend as far as specis- specificity, um, onto Section J, and I think as long as the motion, uh, details what you want changed and the date of effectiveness, um, it can move forward as that motion.
But that doesn't account for the suggestion that Commissioner Monqueya made, which I think is valid as well. So will we amend it and then come back again and amend it again?
I'm sorry, the first part of your, your question was?
So there's...
There's...
I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, I know. And there was several, there was several comments made, so I'm just...
But it, I understand and support the thing about one board. No, no argument from me, but there was other, there were other suggestions made by Commissioner Monqueya that I also am looking forward to hearing more about. So are we gonna amend it tonight to the board issue, number of boards served issue, and then come back again and amend it again? Or should we just amend it all together at one time? That's all I'm asking.
That's what she suggested. Okay, go ahead.
And as a point, question, as answer or option C, uh, could you, could we amend and give like a timeframe to the, for this to be effective?
Yes, I mean, as long as it's specific.
Because I think that would combine A and B, and now we have C.
Correct.
Would that be okay?
That would be okay, as long as it's specifically worded as a motion, so it's clear.
Well, I, so, uh, Counselor, I think before the floor, we have a motion to table and a second, and we've had all the discussion, I think, that we'd like to have. Is there anything else? If not, that'll be, uh, there should be a vote. All those in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
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 There's two. All opposed, say no.
Nay.
Four, again, so majority rules. Okay, now, that is not, it's not on the floor, but I think, I think...
Mayor, I make a motion that we change on, under Section four eligibility criteria on Section J, multiple services. Boards and commission members shall not serve concurrently on more than one board or commission effective immediately, eight twenty-one, twenty eighteen.
Okay.
And therefore thereupon, I'm sorry, and therefore thereupon, the member, uh, choosing